Call the meeting to order, want to welcome everybody here. We've got a full house here today. I'd like to call on Counselor Jake Siemens to bring the opening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many people remember, last November 16th, I had a cardiac event. I had a slight heart attack. It wasn't so slight, but if it wasn't for my wife Audrey, I don't know exactly what would have all have happened that morning. But the emergency care, when she got me there, was excellent, both in Steinbach and in Winnipeg. It turned out it wasn't life-threatening, but it had many profound effects on my life. Physically, all is well, at least for the most part. But what I wasn't ready for was the emotional and physiological side, or the psychological side of the whole event. So what Audrey and myself did is we attended school, called cardiac school, at the refit center in Winnipeg. And the instructor's first words at the first meeting was, "So, you've had a heart attack. Get ready. You're gonna have another one. Apparently, once you've had one heart attack, you are setting yourself up to have another one. But there is something you can do. You can control it through behavior and diet and understanding of what exactly happens." I also found out that in my case, eighty to eighty-five percent of my heart attack was hereditary. It didn't matter how much bike I rode, it wouldn't have mattered what I would have eaten necessarily, it was going to happen. So they taught us a couple things: how to sleep, and how much to sleep, and how to manage it; how to eat, that one I struggle with; how to exercise, including how not to ride a bike; and how to reduce your stresses and recognize your stresses. Then Audrey and myself had many, many different discussions on the what-ifs. And that has been part of the emotional side that has, that we, and maybe more I have struggled with and Audrey has. We talk about the current situations that we're in, what our financial situation is, where we live, how we live, what we eat, what we don't eat, and so on. And now, each time I feel a tightness in my chest, I wonder, "Uh-oh, is this another heart attack? Or is that, or am I tired and I need to sleep? What does it all feel like?" So gradually, I'm beginning to understand all that. So every morning, I get up at five, I walk my four kilometers, like I'm supposed to do. On weekends and some evenings, I get to ride my bike, especially now that it's nice red side, and I continue on my weight-loss program, which is one pound per week, and it is so far being successful. As maligned as our healthcare system has been, and is been, and all the talk about it, it had worked phenomenally for me. Again, both in Steinbach and in Winnipeg. I continue to keep our MLA, Minister of Health Kelvin Girtson, my prayers, as he's working at solving some of the issues related to our healthcare system. And I can only hope that he doesn't end up the same as past healthcare or health ministers before him, where they have needed healthcare. In the last six months, it has been a journey, as I work on saying no to things in my life, like all the different sweets and so on, and that's worked very well. But also feeling my ears grow because of all the different salads I have to eat. I'm happy and thankful to all the support from my wife Audrey, my family, and also our many friends and people that I know who've been there throughout this adventure, and I hope to be around for many years to have more adventures. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Siemens, and we also hope you're around for many more years. All right, we have the agenda in front of us. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Counselor Funk, seconded by Counselor Fair. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We have the minutes from April 18th for a regular council meeting on page one. You've all had a chance to review these, page one to three. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Counselor Swagstra, seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. There's no business arising from the minutes. We'll now move, it's just at 7:35, we'll now move to the public hearings. Bylaw 2080. This is 197-199 Brant Street. This is starting on page four for council members. I'll close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workineteen, I'll ask you to introduce this, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and the members of council, this is a public hearing to hear the matter of rezoning by law 2080 for properties with civic address of 197 and 199 Brant Street in Steinbach. The owner and the applicant for the rezoning is Mr. Elmer Taves of TNT Ventures, Inc. Purpose of zoning by law 2080 is to rezone the subject properties from C2 commercial community zone to RMD residential medium-density zone. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to allow for the construction of a multifamily development. Notices as required by the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence or objections on file. The city of Steinbach today received comments from the Community and Regional Planning Branch, which noted no concerns with the file, and recommended that the current approach on PTH-12 be closed with access being provided from Chapel Drive. That particular recommendation has been taken under consideration in the development agreement that is also being recommended by administration. Based on the reports and information that has been provided in the agenda package, it, administration notes that the surrounding properties around the subject property are predominantly used for multifamily development, and the feeling of administration is that this would be a good and appropriate fit for the existing uses that are present within the neighborhood. And administration recommends that the bylaw be given second and third reading, subject to any objections that may be presented at the public hearing, and also subject to the completion or an execution of the development agreement.
Thank you. We do have the applicant here today. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Uh, yes, sir.
If you do, I'll ask you to take the podium, state your name and address, and then we'll go from there. The reason we do that is everything is recorded and gets to be put online.
Good evening. My name is Elmer Taves. This is one of my, this is my first meeting here in Steinbach. I'm not a regular here like Bob, but maybe we can change that. Well, good to hear Jake's report there. I'm, we live in a great country here. We have one of the best healthcare systems in the world, and I can attest to that with my family, parents, and in-laws. We had some family emergency in Calgary where it was just unbelievable. Anyhow, my name is Elmer Taves, just to give you a little bit of my background there. I spent ten, twelve years in the construction trade years ago, when PCL was building all the malls in Winnipeg. I think I worked in almost all of them. Moved to Calgary for three years, and then came back, started hog farming, which spent the best thirty years of my physical life, which did me in physically and financially pretty well. Thank God I had a little bit of real estate, and that's been actually pretty good, and been my, kind of my saving grace here. So yeah, my, Elmer Taves, presenting his proposal for 197-199 Brant, from C2 commercial community to RMP, residential medium-density, to add eighteen three-bedroom condo units, meaning rentals or family units here. The last number of years, we've been building three-bedroom condos ten minutes east of Steinbach in a community called La Brocree. Every year when we are nearing completion, I always wonder who's gonna rent these units. This has not, and does not seem to be, an issue. Seventy, eighty percent of our tenants are from Steinbach, which I couldn't believe at the time, even can't believe today. When we built there, I thought High Life would have a lot of people renting our units, and it's not. I think today, we have maybe three, four people that are employed at High Life that rent there. They prefer Steinbach, but are unable to find three-bedroom units in Steinbach. Their jobs are also in Steinbach area. We've been able to help fill some of the void here. The tenants that we attract with these three-bedrooms are young families who are looking for three-bedrooms, and generally, this brings them looking for houses where rent is considerably higher. Utility is almost triple in winter, so we believe we have found a little niche market with three-bedrooms being more affordable. These people down the road look to owning their own homes. Here, too, they look for housing to replace their rent payments to go towards a house payment. And this would kind of fall in the line of property going for $200,000 dollars and less, which we all know is a real challenge. In Steinbach today, the rental units that are available are probably eighty percent two-bedroom units. There are landlords, investors that are building some three-bedrooms, but a very small portion of what's being built. Every month, we have tenants moving back to Steinbach. Reasons are schools, jobs, and amenities. They often move to La Brocree, and they say, "Well, rent is a hundred dollars less," but then they drive two vehicles, and they say, "Well, the gas costs us more than our savings on rent." Just for an example, last month, I had two tenants bought houses, and two moved back to Steinbach. We probably managed to keep with twenty, thirty percent of tenants that move in, that move in about our system, in our system. And kind of our plan to provide the alternative Steinbach with more three-bedroom affordable units available, would keep more of the people in our system there, hopefully. The block between Chapel and Brant is filled with rental properties and condos. Presently, only, I've written down three residential houses left, but there's actually four. One is turned into a business called Celebrations, and one belongs to myself. And after this proposal, there would be two residences, or two places left where actually there are residences. I went and talked to the ladies that own the Celebrations there, and it's a business they run out of there. Nobody's ever lived there, they run it as a business, and they down the road actually are looking at selling it, and they were actually almost apologizing to me that on the weekends, there might be vehicles coming in and shining to the back of my units. I said, "Well, that, don't worry about that, I'm good with that." So they were actually very nice and decent about it. I have written here, there are nearly 200 units in this block, that's, I actually went, and that's what, one of my friends has some units in there, and there's actually about 140 as of today. There's maybe room for 200 on the road. The condos south of this, our proposal, has room for twenty-plus more condos. I had a meeting with Phil East in Jordan a while back, and they suggested closing, which was already mentioned here, road access to Brant, and having the access entrance off of Chapel. And also that amalgamate the two, 197 and 199, which is, one is on my personal name and one is on TNT Ventures, that amalgamate the two there, so that would then become one property. So we've met all your requirements, have two parking stalls per unit, no variances, I think your parking requirements are one and a half plus 10 percent, so we have, we have done due diligence there, so we got plenty of that. Also have a plan on paper where this property would actually accommodate a three-story building, 24 units, six more than the eighteen I'm asking for here today. Return investment would be better, meet all the city requirements, but have chosen to go this two-story route. People much prefer their own space, not a hallway to their unit, so I trust that mayor and council members will find this an asset to your city here. I look forward to working with you and have more property at needs rezoning, and would provide this opportunity for young families to stay in your city and down the road own their own homes. Thank you for the time I've been allowed here to present this proposal to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Taves. Are there any questions for Mr. Taves before we move forward? Seeing none, thank you. We may ask you to come back to the podium, but for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Anyone wishing to object or have any questions? One last time, is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none? I will then close the council, or close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Fair?
Move the second reading.
Move second reading, seconded by Counselor Swagstra. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a very good fit, as Mr. Taves had a very good presentation. He covered off pretty much everything that anybody, I don't think anything, anybody can add anything. He's talked with the neighbors, and there, there's no objections to it. I think the three bedrooms, because of the area, I think would be a great, a great fit for the city, and so I can easily support this.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to note that the other properties that are nearby are also zoned residential medium-density, so this is consistent with the other zonings we have in the area, and so this, this type of zoning is not uncommon, and it is a good thing to have more, more housing available in the city, so I will support as well.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Anything in closing? Counsel, obviously, we do need additional multifamily in our community. We've seen the vacancy rate probably historic low in our city, and to see an investment happening in our city when it comes to three-bedrooms, I think is important, and look forward to seeing this proceed. Call for the question. All those in favor of second reading. Thank you. That's carried. Is there a motion for third reading, please? Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion? Anything further? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. You may now proceed. All right, we will now move to 6B, the variance V 2017-03, 50 PTH-12 North, page 19. Mr. Swagstra?
Mr. Mayor, I'm stepping out, possible perceived conflict of interest.
Thank you. Counselor Penner?
I'm here, possible perceived conflict.
I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workineteen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is an application for variance, file V-2017-03 for property with civic address of 50 PTH-12 North. The owner of the property is Steinbach Christian Schools, Inc., with the applicant being Signetics Manufacturing, Inc. Purpose of the variance application is to allow a freestanding sign to have a maximum height of 25 feet, whereas the maximum height allowed in the EI educational institutional zone is 20 feet. Applicant is proposing to put up a new sign for the Steinbach Christian School. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. Recommendation from administration for the, the application is that council approve it, subject to any new information that may be provided at the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Thank you. Do you wish to speak?
No, thanks.
No? Are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? For a third time, anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none? I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed with this variation? Counselor Siemens?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion?
A few comments, Mr. Mayor, through you, or to you.
Thank you.
I think this is a good application. We see a lot of signs coming up. We've had a lot of these applications over the last while for our business, now for education as well. We have one at other educational facilities in Steinbach. The request here is also to raise it five more feet, because from 20 to 25, to allow that, and that I agree with, too, because it is highway frontage, and it is set back from the highway to give better visibility. I think that we could do that as well.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Counselor Penner?
Just to add to Counselor Siemens' comments, yes, the variance request is very minimal, and it is a large property, so I don't see any ill effects from allowing the variation.
Very good. Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Fair?
A question of, uh...
Through, for the applicant? Okay. Mr. Remples, you can take the...
It might be a dumb question, but through you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing this is on the highway, does this have to go to highways as well, or is this...
It is outside of highway's jurisdiction.
It is.
North, north side of Funk's Toyota, the north proper line is where highway's jurisdiction ends.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything in closing? No, thank you. Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. We'll move to 6C. This is the conditional use CU 2017-01. This is on page 30. This is 402 Main Street. I will close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Workineteen, please.
Members of council, this file for conditional use, CU-2017-01, is being applied for, for property at 402 Main Street. The owner of the property is 472-5841 Manitoba LTD, with the application, or the applicant being Elysian, Inc. Purpose of the conditional use is to permit a tattoo parlor to locate on the subject property, as is required under the city of Steinbach zoning by law. Notices pursuant to the Planning Act were issued. There was no correspondence received on file. Recommendation from administration is for council to approve the conditional use, subject to any new information that may be provided at the hearing.
Thank you. Is the applicant here today? Okay. Does applicant wish to speak?
No.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant, or anyone wishing to object? Anyone wishing to object or have any questions? For a third time, anyone wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none, does council have any questions for the applicant? All right, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Seconded by Counselor Swagstra. Any discussion?
No, I think this is a fairly straightforward request here, and I think it'll be a good fit in that area, and I nominate Counselor Swagstra to be the first customer.
You can go get your, your veronica and farmer sausage, and then go get yourself a tattoo.
I'm assuming there's a coupon attached to that?
All right. Thank you. Counselor Swagstra, you can respond to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It would be inappropriate for me to be the first customer, as I'm the seconder, I think the mover has to go first. But this does seem like a straightforward application, and this is noted here, this is a relocation of existing business from half a block away. It was okay then, it's okay now.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. All right, we will move now to 8A, and that's the reports and recommendations from the city manager. This is on page 39. This is in response to a question from Counselor Swagstra two weeks ago. Mr. Workineteen, do you want to just highlight anything in that additional information that was rather interesting?
Yes, well, just to somewhat summarize the questions, and please correct me if I've got it incorrect, but the questions were with respect to the, the attached media report that was issued and present on the CBC dated April 13th, in reference to a study that was completed recently, indicating that there are some, some alternate egg-laying and egg-hatching habits of different varieties of mosquitoes. That question, as requested by council at the last meeting, was put to individuals from Manitoba Health that controls the mosquito larva sighting program and provides direction to the city of Steinbach for the mosquito control program we undertake in Steinbach. The indications, however brief, by Mr. Scott Graham Durham from Manitoba Health, essentially was, was summarized in one of the, the comments or statements that he made was, "These aren't the first species," in reference to, to the study, "these aren't the first species to lay their eggs on dry surfaces, and the particular variety, which I don't admit to knowing how to pronounce," mentions, refers to the common nuisance mosquito in, in Manitoba, typically lays their eggs in low-lying areas where water will eventually flood, causing them to hatch. The intended purpose of the city's larva sighting program is to spray the required product within ponds, pools, and places of standing water, and eventually, all mosquito eggs to the, as provided by Manitoba Health, do have to enter that pond or body of water in order to grow in the larva stage. And based on that information, they assured us that at some point, the larva sighting program that the city undertakes, regardless of where the mosquitoes lay their eggs, will eventually wind up in ponds of water, under which the larva sighting program that the city is undertaking, will have an opportunity to, to control those mosquito larvae.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for administration? Counselor Swag?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Mr. Workineteen for, for clarifying this here. Just to, just to follow up, the, in regards to making sure that we are getting the mosquitoes as they hatch, it references in here the importance of larval sampling ahead of any treatment. I'm assuming that is something that we currently do, that's built, that's part of our procedures, that, that's in terms of larva sighting, that there's testing to ensure that the eggs are present, so even if they were initially laid in the dry area, the waters come over, it's in the water now, is that, is that basically correct?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. And, just...
Okay, go ahead.
And, I'm not sure if the city manager will have the answer to this. I was a little surprised, where, just based on the media reports, in regards to, this is like a groundbreaking study, about some mosquitoes don't lay their, their eggs directly in the water, and yet, in this information in the province, the common nuisance mosquito, which I think we have a few of those around, typically lay their eggs in low-lying areas where the water isn't there yet. Is that, that just seems a bit surprising to me, that that's, that therefore, it's become such a big story afterwards. I'm just wondering, in the discussions with the province on this, was there any sort of discussion on that, about that this is, does this change anything?
All right. Mr. Workineteen, first of all, though, I do want to say, the most surprising thing for me is that you're actually using a CBC article as a, as a reference point, but, Mr. Workineteen, can you go ahead, please?
I use Steinbach line of Carolina.
I know, I know. Mr. Workineteen, any comment?
Well, I'm not really sure what to say to that, but I guess I can say that while they were, I guess, surprised at the study, the individual wasn't aware of that particular study being issued, they, they did indicate that there can be common habits in, in different environments. For example, comparing the study that was undertaken in Florida, I think that's where the, that formed the basis of the CBC report, and there can be similar tendencies to certain varieties of mosquitoes that inhabit Manitoba. So, at any rate, they did not advise that there was any change to their planned program in Manitoba as a result, but the province is regularly reviewing the, the procedures, and if there are any changes and updates as to effective programming that might make it more effective for the city or in Manitoba, they would certainly let us know.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Workineteen. We'll now move to 9A, the accounts payable in the back of the book. You've all had a chance to review this. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Fair. Any discussion?
Let's see, there was something in here. Item, page 10, Municipalities Trading Company of Manitoba, Building and Liability Insurance. Is this for all of the city properties at one time?
Yes.
At one time payment?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other...
And page 11, sorry.
Go ahead.
Page 11, there was a progress payment to PennCo Construction. Is that the last payment to PennCo Construction?
I believe not. That building project, that's for the city hall expansion. That project is still underway, and I expect there will be more progress payments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. Any questions of council? Counselor Siemens?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to administration.
All right.
I got caught in two traffic jams in Steinbach, surprise me or not. I know we do traffic studies on the corner of 52 and Industrial Road, that's part of our, the plan. Do we have Lone and Hespler on that same, do we, are we doing traffic counts at the same time we do the traffic counts for the other intersections?
If you're referring to the annual traffic counts that are performed by MMM Group on behalf of the city, that intersection is not included in that annual traffic count.
Thank you. I would like to add that at some point. That is, that intersection gets a lot of traffic, especially with Old Tom the way it is, and especially a couple, in, traffic going out in the morning, traffic coming in in the afternoon. I was backed up past Lynnhurst, I couldn't move from the stop sign because of the traffic flow that was coming into town. I think that would be a critical intersection for us to look at.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to a question to administration. Mr. Workineteen, that program is already set for this year, is that correct? Or not?
The generic program does typically look at intersections along PTH-12 and PTH-52. However, if there's specific requests in addition to that, that could likely be dealt with if that is council's wish.
Okay, thank you. So I guess it's a question of council that you're referring, and you're asking whether council would like to see that one looked at as well as part of the study?
I would be okay with just getting a report back from administration on that intersection as well, like we've done on other intersections as well. It doesn't necessarily have to be part of that...
Of that official report, rather, a less, a less official? Okay, all right.
That intersection does need attention somewhere.
Mr. Workineteen, is that something possible? I know we've done some informal accounts without incurring that additional cost.
Yes, there are intersections or traffic counts from time to time that have been completed by staff. If that is an alternate that council would be satisfied with, that could be an option. If that is an alternate that council would be satisfied with, that could be an option.
Through consensus, is council comfortable then putting it on that list then of, of the routine ones that they normally do and, and not adding it to the official traffic count study? Through consensus?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions for council? We will then move to 11A, the minutes from the library, J-CAP Library. This is on page 43. You've all had a chance to review those. Any questions? Take it as information. 11B, we have the Chambers-Frazer Steinbach Community Development Corporation on page 45, the audited statement. You've had a chance to review those. Any questions? Take it as information. 11C, we have Manitoba Hydro Canada Summer Games information on page 53. Any questions? Mr. Workineteen?
Uh, just a request of council, the financial statements for the Steinbach Community Development Corporation would request council resolution to adopt.
All right, thank you. Council, can I have a resolution, please? Councilor Penner, seconded by Councilor Swagstra. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Anything further from council? Call for the question, all those in favor. We have the Manitoba Hydro Canada Summer Games on page 53. Mr. Workineteen, is there any action that needs to occur on this item? This is, this is the route for the torch relay?
Uh, no action required. This is more a matter of a request that has been put to administration, similar to any other public event or walk, where a request of using the public right of way has been, has been requested. It is more for information for council, so they're aware of the event.
Thank you. One question, is Ryan Canada his real name? There's no, nothing added as other business. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?